Laura Jones and her husband. She's got that property that sticks way out.
Right, right, right.
Versus say, hey, let's do a land survey. You have this thing that you're all green.
It's a contagion.
Let's get you this big nice.
All welcome. Thank you. I didn't know I was invited to the meeting because it was beforehand. Was it sworn in yet? I didn't know.
Tell everybody's invited to.
Anyway, I opened some curtains and I gave a brief thing to go over.
We'll start less than a minute.
So you've heard about your Christmas tree today.
I did. Were you there?
No, I bought mine a couple of days ago. But I was down there looking at a reed that had set aside. See if we can find a bigger one. They couldn't find a bigger one. So anyway, they'll find one. They'll find another place. They said you were in.
Yep.
We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So I asked everybody to stand and then we'll do a swearing in ceremony.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. If I can, you raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor in and for the city of Dexter, county of Washtau, and state of Michigan according to the best of my abilities. I will. If I can have you sign that.
Thank you.
Are you here?
Yep.
And then Donna, Julian Paul, if I can have you stand and raise your right hand.
I would like my wife to come and stand, I think, please.
Oh, I've got a couple of marriages.
And now it's perfect after photos. All right. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of council member in and for the city of Dexter, county of Washtau, and state of Michigan according to the best of my ability. All right. We have all three of you signed on these. Thank you, Justin. Okay. With that, Jones, if you'd call the roll.
Councilmember Cousins.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Knight.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Tao.
Here.
Mayor Keough.
Here.
Can everybody hear me in the back? Okay, should have asked everybody. Thank you. Approval of the minutes is item number C.
I'll move the minutes to the record company in November 13th, 2017.
Second by Knight. Thank you both. Mr. Smith, any comments?
I have a minor one on page three. Under the state manager's report, the next to the last bullet, we have an extra word and in there after wrap up. So to wrap up the city handbook.
Did you catch?
That's all I have.
Ms. Knight?
I'm just saying.
Other councilmembers, any comments on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes with that one small correction. Signify by saying aye, please. Those opposed? Thank you. We have no prearranged participation this evening, so we're down to approval of the agenda. Please note there is an item L five on the table, which is consideration of a new hire to fill a public utility operator position that is open.
I'm moving through the agenda for the addition of L five. Yeah.
Motion by Fisher, second by Smith.
Thank you both. With the addition of L five. Discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda, signify by saying aye, please. Those opposed? Thank you. We have no public hearings this evening, so we're down to non-arranged participation. We have a full audience. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak this evening? Didn't mean to put you on the spot walking in. Okay, we'll keep going. Not at this time. Oh, 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 sorry. Please state your name and address for the article.
Pete Pozzo, 3630 Meadowview.
Hi, Pete.
Hello. My comments, I still, I'm a building owner in town as well. And I appreciate you sharing the parking study with me. I've had a chance to review it and discuss it with other members in the community. And I understand I just missed the discussion on that, so I apologize for missing that. But one of my thoughts in some of the feedback that I've received on the property study is that some of the parking is privately owned parking and at any time, any of that property could be redeveloped and accounts taken away from what's available here. And so I understand it's a perception. I certainly perceived that there was a lack of parking yesterday at a birthday party at our dance studio where there was literally no parking around our studio. The overfilled lot was full as well and people had to park, you know, people were parking on the gravel parking slot that's going to be developed. So I would encourage the folks that prepared this study to come in on a weekend and relook at this again. And I also encourage the city to, I understand there's some conversations with Norfolk and they have a say as to what's going to happen with the property package. But I still think that that development should not proceed without, you know, an opportunity for the city to have property that they control versus it being public. I know it may be too late, but I think we're holding ourselves at the mercy of the developer to decide whether or not we're going to have any additional space going forward. So those are my comments and I think that I'll leave it there.
Thanks, Pete. Pete, just so you know, everything is open book at this point and the developer understands that it's still our property.
Okay.
Okay, and you know, there's essentially four quadrants that are bisected by the power lines. The power lines on Broad, the power lines that go across the park. The use of each of those four has not been determined and parking is definitely not the topic that's been discussed.
Okay.
By the way, I'm going to take this opportunity, our first public workshop to talk about what's going on on that is next Wednesday, December 6th. If I have that right, from six to eight at Creekside. So if you're, that's the first opportunity to come and tell everybody what you want to see there. Or what you think is needed in the community there. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening under non-arranged? Okay, thank you. We are down to communications. There were three communications in the packet, our upcoming meeting list and temporary assigned calendar along with a letter from Comcast about important price changes. Any comments on the communications? Seeing none, we'll jump right into our first report from our Public Services Superintendent. Dan, how are you?
Good. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Hopefully everybody had a happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
I provided a two-week report and if you have any questions with that, I'd like to take them at this time. And I also have a couple of updates that happened after my report was in fact.
So how many RTVs do we have? The duties is called duties RTV.
Two.
Gotcha.
One to D W.
I laughed when I read that.
Okay, sorry.
Questions for Dan on the written report?
I stuff part of the re-sold water meter regularly.
Got it.
Well, from my updates, Zed and Michelle sent me an email and he wanted to staff down and go over our plan for our sludge, our wastewater improvement plan upgrades with the fine screening and the drip removal and the tertiary filter. I think it was about an hour, hour and a half. I was really thankful to Zed that she came down. I think the more information that I can get to you guys on my level makes my job easier. We started actually with the blower project because he hasn't really, hasn't been back there since we started did the blower projects. We went through that first, aeration tanks. And additionally, before we got to the reason he was down there and showed us the clarifier drives that we had just done, two new clarifiers and drives and the sandblasting in the painting. We did that in-house and then we went out front and went over where we're at and what we're thinking at this point. If there's any other council members that would like to come down, I would definitely take the time to show you guys where we're at. Because it's a little bit easier to explain and show you the plans we have now and then walk you through what we're looking at. Also, last week, I got an email from Red Ronenbaum. He used to be our, he works for OHM. He used to work, be our Patrick Rose for a good many years. Now he's in charge of that group of people. When I got the email originally, I thought that was probably going to have something to do with where we're going with the wastewater upgrades with F and B. As I found out fairly quick, we met at the office first and we went out for lunch. It was about something that he had overheard about me not being happy with the last project that we just were trying to complete on Forrest and Hudson and also other street projects that we had done. So I asked him where he heard it from and it was from Bob Colley that works for the city of Milford. I have been part of five different municipalities. They're all directors and superintendents and we've met a couple of times. After the first meeting that we had with Heartland, Howell, City of Brighton, City of Wixom, and the village of Milford, I recognized that the city of Milford uses OHM kind of like we have, you know. They do in the wastewater, the streets and everything else, so there was kind of a connection there. So about two months after the first meeting we had, you know, Bob called me and he was asking me a bunch of questions about our sludge upgrades that we had did, you know, years ago. And they were having a few problems over there and we kind of talked through it on the phone and I gave him some suggestions. Well, a couple of months ago, I called Bob and asked him about what, you know, OHM had provided for them with streets and roads and different things like that. And pretty much he gave them A's across the board for what, you know, they were responsible. So I asked him who was on the team and I didn't recognize anybody, any of the guys that were on the team from Milford over there. So to get back to Red's question, where this all came from, you know, with this, with these municipalities that I'm involved with, we take time to look at, you know, what the engineers provide for us. It could be sidewalk inspections. There's a lot of communication, good communication that goes on with that. And I told him, Red, that I wasn't really happy because when we don't get projects completed on time and they're over budget or they're left for the next year, it creates work for all of us and it costs us money. And our budgets doesn't support that. At the end of the meeting that I had with Red, he gave me a good handshake and he told me he was going to look into this. And he was going to try to provide some feedback and see if we could do something different. Because this isn't the first project that we ran into this problem. So I wanted to share that with you guys today. I thought it was a good meeting with Red. I have a lot of respect for Red. I'm not headhunting Patrick Rose or Chris Donikowski. I really like these guys. I have a good working relationship and a personal relationship with them. But I just wanted to express to you guys that when these things don't get taken care of, there's a lot of things that go into it. From what I'm going to do day to day, you know, our budget and trying to figure out how we're going to get this job completed.
Any questions?
Zach, I'll throw up there. There are a couple of projects at the plant that were done by staff as opposed to farmed out.
Yep.
And for the folks who weren't up there on that lovely day, could you ballpark to them how much we saved by being able to do that in-house?
I had to, I had to do a little research.
More than change though, right?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, they charged a pretty good fee.
But it was, it's tough because we don't have enough extra hours.
Well, we're taking away from other things, but for me, I mean, I don't, I like to keep things in-house and I like to do it ourself, but we're taking away from other business. But, I mean, if you think about it, when we call F and B or we call OHM, it's a problem we can't resolve in-house. You know what I mean? And for it not to get done in a timely manner, that just adds more stuff for all of us. And it's our budgets, it's my manpower, it's equipment, it's different things. And I really hope with your guys' support of me coming to you and then talking to Red that as we go forward, we can do things a little bit differently. Because I think they're a good company. They've worked here for a long time.
One last bit. This is for Councilman Bertel. When I was there, Superdemon Schlopp actually had calculated the potential fines or started.
We were in the process of doing. We're still trying to go with it.
And that's still going to go to utility company first, but it's a lot.
For?
For NUCO.
Okay. Being over their. I figured it was going to be extensive.
So we'll have actual, they're working on actual numbers.
That's just my wild card.
Well, like I said, council, if you would like to come down and you'd like to, you know, firsthand like Zach did, I would gladly have you draw over where we're at so far with the upgrade.
Mr. Cousins?
Dan, you started out with the discussion of Forrest and Hudson Street. You know, since that's my neighborhood and less than a hundred yards away, I see it every day, okay? Could you give me just a summary of how that, a brief summary of how that process started on that site? Either with plans and then it were modified or changed? And then the potential, as I understand it, to have it corrected sometime in the future? I mean, we've said that, okay?
Well, I know right now that, I mean, Red was, they're not coming back this year to fix that. That's what I was told by Red.
So we're living with what that is and that slope there on the driveway?
Actually, I drove up there. I mean, there was a few other spots that I wanted to take. I made a list. And the first place we went to was up there and asked him, I mean, the punch list hasn't been done yet and there's punch list items and there's also safety stuff concerns, which is a big part of my job is safety. I mean, we've got to figure out what we're going to do with the big dip that we have on the one side and we also have a toe catch on the other side. So I did address that with Red and talked, and I've also talked to Patrick and Chris, you know, Donikowski about it too. So we're working through that process right now. Probably going to have to block that off, that one side off completely and not use it. That's the only thing that I can think of that's going to be the safest for the city resident.
For, when you say the one side, you're talking about the Hudson Street side with the long drop slope there? That's very sharp there?
And I know Patrick is working on, I know they've sent many of emails back to the contractor getting back here to do the punch list.
So can you answer me another question then? When, as of today, they poured the concrete for the new, or yesterday they poured the concrete for the new driveway for the new house on the corner and the new sidewalk there, both going down Hudson and coming up there. And you mentioned this a second ago, the flag that's there that has dropped approximately an inch that this contractor had to somehow guess where he was going to be. Because it's dropped down an inch and he has to match, he has to end up finding it somewhere, okay?
Well, the flag that I sent the picture of was actually in one of the corners of the suite.
The corner there.
That one corner.
When it dropped down, it also dropped down to where it's a different level.
Well, the one day that I was up there with Red, the builder came over and he was asking questions and then I asked Red if he wanted to handle it. And he said, no, I'm on Chris Donikowski. Chris Donikowski was up there in five minutes to work with the builder to work through that process.
So was the present construction approved by OHM in which we now have a channel of dirt on two sides and a sidewalk that's approximately two foot below the level of the dirt level there?
I did not approve that. And then I'm not sure the conversation that Chris had up there, but I would have to believe that that's what they had designed or they had figured, but I don't know.
When you say they designed.
It wasn't designed.
But that's all been worked out. I mean, they have agreed to change it and fix it. It's just isn't going to be done.
I haven't been up there today yet.
Yeah, no, I mean, we talked about that at council weeks ago, that that's going to be fixed and will be corrected if it's not a punchless item or verticar because obviously something.
I guess maybe I'm going to state correctly is that when they, when I say they, the new builder there that's creating the sidewalk there.
You're on the southeast corner.
On the southeast corner. He had to mess that sidewalk and because of the elevation, because he couldn't get up fast enough to make any more cuts, you know, to make it handicap accessible, he dug down into the dirt. And now the dirt is here on one side here, cut off tree limbs or tree roots on one side and it's this high on the other, at least a foot and a half. And the sidewalks here, you walked down a trench.
I'll have to, I don't, I don't know this off the top of my head.
It's the most, and I don't know how he could possibly mow it or take care of it in the position that it is there. I want to know who approved that and how it was approved to make this gentleman do what he did there when I'm not sure it's even safe or it's certainly not visually very attractive. I don't know if we're going to force him to put in some kind of a retaining wall there on either side or what?
I can follow up with Patrick and Chris tomorrow.
If you would, I would appreciate that.
And then we can generate an email back if that's what you would like.
Okay.
Thank you for your help. I'll wait for the report.
Dan, I guess I did have one question though.
On the wastewater. Yep.
The sample that ATS did for sending.
For arsenic?
Yeah, for arsenic. Talking to you about that, is that a long-term concern or is that something?
Well, that's what we're trying to work out right now. I mean, I've talked to F and B. We've done a lot more mixing. What our usual problem with the high arsenic is biotech gives us like a half hour. Say, yeah, we're going to be there in a half hour to get a sample so they can land a pot of sludge. So we don't have ample time to actually mix that secondary. And that's what we need to do and that's what we're supposed to do. So what I told Eric, our lead operator, and biotech is I want to take my own sample. So we mixed it for two days. One of the, one of the concerns I do have is, you know, we backwash now from the filters down to wastewater treatment plant. So that does, but with the calculations that OHM did for us, we didn't think it was going to be a problem. So that's why I wanted to re-sample myself. We mixed for two and a half days and then we'll see what them samples come back. The only bad thing about the secondary is it's not, it doesn't mix quite as good as like our primary does, the way we have it set up with the nozzles and everything. So it takes a little bit longer. But I'm hoping that's going to take care of that. If it doesn't, what it means is we need more property to be able to land a pot of that sludge with the arsenic levels that are real close to the end of the time. But I'll follow up with you guys when I, I was hoping we were going to get the results back today.
Okay, that explains what you, that's good. Appreciate that. Other questions for Dan? Okay, next up is our community development manager report. Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine. How's council this evening?
Good.
Yay. I hope you all had a good Thanksgiving. Yeah, I had a great Thanksgiving.
We did, thank you.
Okay. So you have my report and before I go into any updates, do you have any questions on it?
Doesn't look like any questions.
Okay. So my update is going to be, one I'm going to touch on, Encore Theater. I was able to follow up with the city attorney. We're not going to do a temporary use for temporary employment for six months. The concern is that in having me as the administrator, zoning administrator, approve something temporarily that's not even a use that's identified at all in the zoning ordinance, it was too big of a risk to, it was a risky precedent. So I have spoken with the folks at Encore, told them we're going to concentrate on the long-term, the long-term solution, which is the section 307 request. And we won't worry about the short term. And when I say that, it's much the same way as we did with Aubrey's when they moved their seating from one side of the sidewalk to the other and had to come back for the special land use. Same with Dexter Pub. They were, they were allowed to, for that time that they were going through the review process, not go through enforcement. So that's the same way we're going to handle the Encore in the temporary. We'll concentrate on the 307 review. That will go to the planning permission in January. They've submitted all their application in their fees.
Ms. Fisher?
Where did the recommendation for temporary come from?
It wasn't a recommendation. It was something that when, you may recall that when I spoke with Mr. Zahn and Mr. Fink, that that was something we could possibly look at in the temporary, but it was all predicated on being able to follow up with city attorney and city planner to make sure that if that was an administrative decision, it had a solid foundation for doing.
Thank you.
So the other, only other update I have also involves Encore. I received a call from Dan Cooney last week. They have a desire, two things. One, to temporarily enclose where that loading area is, there's that little cover. They'd like to enclose that with sort of like a corrugated metal panel. It would be temporary until they have a, raise enough funds to do their actual expansion project that they want to do. And then put a little lean-to on the back. I'm not sure if the lean-to is temporary or permanent. That's kind of fuzzy right now. What I've asked is that, excuse me, they provide a rendering so that we've got some idea, one, we're on the same page. We all understand what it is that they want to do, what it will look like. And then the process for reviewing an exterior improvement of that nature is site plan review committee, get comments, and then as long as it is acceptable and meets your ordinance, then it should be able to be okay. Devil's always in the details. Being that I don't have a good visual of what they want to do, it's hard to right now say how that would go. But we're still, we're willing to work with them to see how we can help with this happen. So if you've got any questions, I'd have to answer them.
They say what it's going to be used for?
The lean-to would be storage. The enclosed area under the current overhang would be so that when they build their sets during the winter, that would be a protected area currently when they build their sets. We're building them in the theater, so you get a lot of dust and debris and noise that sort of disrupts the. that sort of disrupts the, the recycles that they're going through, so. Apparently no electrical, no mechanical, so I'm not really sure how they're gonna heat that area cause it will get cold, so there are some details that they need to provide, so.
I've had some discussion with Dan about that and I, my suggestion was because the doorway that comes out from the theater is a, is an emergency door that they cannot close that off and that it shouldn't be one that exits. The theater goes through the temporary site, okay? And then exits again, okay? I just think that's bad. And so my suggestion to him was is that you construct it one or two ways. Either just cut off part of it and use part of it of that area there or that they come out exit door and then take an immediate left that would then get you outside out to that other area there, which would still be a handicap, or I understand handicap, handicap and emergency exit there. So that's, I suggested to do that. I hadn't heard about the lean-to in the back. That's the only thing that I.
Mr. Fink just told me about it.
Okay, the only thing about that. I just heard that. He, I thought he did, didn't hear, did he send you a copy of the general area though? Kind of lobbed off and then also a panel, a metal panel? Did you show, did you send me that?
He sent me a picture of a, of a metal structure, but it wasn't, it wasn't shown as part of their building.
Gotcha.
And so it really doesn't.
And he didn't show your floor plan, right?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Other questions, Michelle? Thank you for your good report.
Thank you.
There is a written report from the office of the sheriff in the packet. Anybody have any comments or questions on the written report that is available? Okay, moving down to city manager report. Courtney?
Well, I appreciate being able to add the public utility operating position. We were able to get that worked out. So we'd like to appreciate being able to add that today. Um, one thing that will be on the next agenda is the newer project bond notice of intent. The Tom Crane's guy recommended that we do that sooner rather than later. So we will have the notice of intent for that on sale so that once the units come back or we get a position where we're ready to sell them, just to make sure that the timing works for getting the funds to start the project.
You should get the next meeting review.
Yeah, yeah. So that will start the 45-day referendum period for those bonds. Um, I got, and I mentioned an email I got from Paul McCann about adding a sidewalk from the new patio behind the library to the trail. And then also about the possibility of adding additional on-street parking on Alphine. I got back to him on those things and we'll see if they pursue them with either sending more information from the facility committee or in the letter to Parks and Recreation Commission about potentially expanding the sidewalk. Too much else? Oh, Justin included the information about the third street, the first street park. Our score is not likely to be in the funnel range, but we don't know what the funnel range is yet. I think last year, Justin, you said it was what, $2 million?
Uh, last year was 1.5, I think.
Yeah, so last year's 1.5, but the maximum project amount was 45,000. And so this year they raised to 75,000. So we don't know what that means or more money. But it might be difficult to get all the way down to where we are, which is at 3.3 million. So it looks like it's unlikely that we will receive that grant. But we won't know more for sure, I think, until probably December.
Yeah, they said early to mid-December.
And they did have the wrong last name for the owner of Chayla's. If that name isn't Chayla, that's just the owner, the name of the business, but I didn't know.
Any questions for Courtney? Thank you for breaking up your report with the updates and the ongoing stuff and. Appreciate that. So crack ceiling, we'll, we'll wait till next year?
Yeah, we're gonna put the bid out for that in January. So it's all lined up for law.
I'm sorry, Paul.
The number D on page 27, according about the phase two that you have there. I, I had a copy of that in my folder here and I met with Chris Timmison today because I was concerned about the, the previous agreement with another administration about the pha-, you know, the phasing process and then the changing there. He, he indicated to me that he had no problem with, with the original one as long as it could be away from the playground. The playground was a major issue that they were concerned about and the proximity of that trail to that playground as it was designed. I'm not sure that that couldn't be modified to, to do that. So my question is, have we applied for this and is it in the works already?
The TAP grant, yes. The trust fund isn't till April.
Till April, so.
So we, we should hear feedback generally from the TAP grant people. I think, Patrick, what did you say, December-ish?
We've already submitted.
Right.
The actuaries had come in last week and we didn't probably find a score.
February, so we'll know before we apply for it. Cause one of the things is, we'll know, we should know a little bit more about how much money we'll receive from TAP to know because it was going to be a stretch to afford all the way to Shield anyway. So that will help us know, but we don't have to submit our final trust fund until April. So we have time to figure it out.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that information. You know, I guess one of my concerns is since I was very much involved in the development back in the 60s and 70s of the outdoor lab, it seems to me that without this connectivity and with their restrictions that the school has on, on the playground there, that, that the outdoor lab is basically cut off from the public. There's no access at all to that. You have to walk through, you know, can you park there and walk back through a playground to get there? Seems that's the only access site there. So I did have some concerns. He also brought to me that when they were dealing with the, the site across their, the Jenkins building there, that they were looking to put a piece of fiber network across the, the wetland there and they would not let them do it. So he, he was concerned that there would not even be the ability to modify that wetland at all there to put in a trail. Has that been checked out with our consultants to know that that can happen?
The original plan we proposed to put through the TAP grant, wet, we did a huge wetland approval. The ECU came out and told us where the wetlands were following the trail that was submitted to the TAP grant. Or the original one we developed.
Including the spur that comes up to Baker Road?
Not the spur because that wasn't in the original TAP grant application.
That's his, that's his concern. It's not, it's just the spur's coming up and he said they wouldn't let them come across that wetland along, even with the fibers. He says, I don't know how you're gonna get a trail there. If you get, like, couldn't get a fiber across, he said, so.
We can look at that.
So maybe that should be at least asked for our consultants again about how.
To get it to Baker.
They could do that again because, and, and he indicated that they were very willing to work with the, with the city and the schools even, you know, would be interested in participating in that process there so that they could have access there besides just the school, the proximity of the one school there. They could all, they could all involve in there, so. I, I only went to him because I was encouraged to do that by some school board members to, to solve that problem and try to work it out when I express some concerns about that for them. Thank you for your information.
Other questions for Courtney? Thank you. My written report is in the packet and before the Thanksgiving holiday, I met with a group of kids. A group that I hadn't heard of called Roots and Shoots. There's a Dexter version of that and one of few in the, in the United States, but one of many groups in the world as they, they told me. And one of the questions that they, they asked, and I think it's a great question to at least research, is why we don't have recycling bins in our downtown in addition to our trash cans. Their focus is on how to make the world a better place for people, animals, and the environment. And we didn't spend a lot of time on animals. We talk a lot about the people and what we're doing with our pedestrian connectivity and parks and trails and that type of thing, which they all thought was great. But if the staff could just give some thought to what that would take. I'm sure waste management would have to cooperate or maybe it's our DBW that has to do something that we'd have to store it. But I realize there's issues there, but if you could just.
Right, we did do it and we just kind of piloted in.
Lion's Park?
Yeah, Lion's Park with having recycle and trash, you know. But it's the next month, you know, you have to buy the container and it has to be empty and stored, like you said, so.
Okay. Well, if you, I'm not saying that every corner has to have one. I just, I'd like to, you know, have a good answer.
But even down in, in the parks themselves, like within Mill Creek Park is, and that's where you're gonna be, see people carrying water bottles.
Oh, they're everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're everywhere.
So that and the back of the fire hall.
And, and that's why we wanted to do a pilot in Lion's Park to see if people would actually separate their own containers because having recycling containers that people throw trash into doesn't make the recycling container effective.
More work.
Right.
Yeah, more potentially, right. Courtney and I did have a chance to have an introductory meeting with Adrian from Chels. I know some of you may know him. I had not met him before. The meeting was set up, actually it was turned into a breakfast meeting through our consultant, Kim Hill. If the food we had for breakfast is half as good as what is coming, everybody's in for a major treat. Very generous guy, very funny guy, very family-oriented guy. I think his business will fit in very well. He expressed to us that in about three or four weeks that he intended to submit some plans to the health department for some modifications to the Foggy Bottom site that he's looking, a former Foggy Bottom site that he's looking at. He's not planning on making a lot of interior renovations, but does he, at least one wall put up for something, so. Anyways, need to meet him and be welcome to addition to the community, if you're sure.
What type of breast drive is he looking?
Mexican.
Thank you.
I would say authentic Mexican.
Yes.
Is what I would, I would say. This isn't your typical Reno, although he did tell, he did tell stories of being a young child and growing up in Mexico City. His father bought a parking lot, bought, he's a vacant property, paved it, rented the spaces, leased the spaces for income. And on one small corner of it, they had a taco hut. So when people weren't parking cars, they, they were making tacos. He says, this, he says, this picture of me, and he's got a little picture of him standing in front of the hut in the parking lot. He says, this sums up my career. He went on to be an architectural engineer designing parking structures. And now after he's retired from that, he's operating Mexican restaurants. So kind of a cute story. Anyway, we did have a, I'm gonna move, Dexter. We, we did, we did have a very good walking tour of the 3045 Broad area and surrounding area. We started right at the corner of the forest today. There were people from Norfolk and their consultants, Quinn Evans, the architects. Three planning commissioners attended, several DDA members, so at least two or three, two DDA members of it.
Two plus you.
Okay. And we walked around and looked at that property from just about every angle you could look at. We got to meet some of the other architects that are gonna be on the team or that will be in the room at the listening session that's coming up next week, here next week. They talked about the elevation differences. They talked about the potential new building at 150 Jeffords. But we have some contingencies to talk about a little later on the agenda. Talked about the proximity to the Broad Street walkway and coming down from the bakery through that site and what that would open up to. Talked about the adjacent residential areas. So it was a way for them to get introduced a little bit to the staff and different boards a little bit. And there'd be more opportunity for that, but they wanted to hear some of the things that, that we were thinking about and just get an introduction. So step one of the process and I invite you all again December 6th, from 6 to 8 at Creek Side Cafeteria. Does anybody have any questions? Reminder to council, first of all, congratulations to three DDA elected.
Thank you.
We're forward to working with everybody. We have our first meeting after this one to do our resolution of organizational matters, which is this Thursday. Just a reminder in the evening. And on the consent agenda, what follows, I did have to make one quick change for the board of review. Mr. Cousins now being on council.
Yes, sir.
We have December meetings that we need board review and I'm recommending Joe Sandofer for that, that portion. So if anybody has any questions on that, I'll take it now, otherwise I'll, I'll move on to consent agenda. Okay, move on? There are two items on the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the two items on the consent agenda. Those will pay rolling at $150,000, $211.69 and your review appointment of Joe Sandofer.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Smith. All those in favor of approving two items on consent agenda, so if anybody's saying hi, please?
Hi.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. There's no old business today, so we're down to new business, item L1. Consideration of 150 Jeffords, review of parking, road closure, and staging plan. For those of you in the audience, this plan for 150 Jeffords is right along Jeffords between the alley behind PNC and Forest, right opposite the park. They received conditional final site plan approval. Had our last meeting on November 13th. And one of the conditions that was on there in addition to some of the stuff related to the master deed by laws was to come up with a temporary parking plan. They need to use the spaces on Jeffords and on Forest and sometimes behind the bank in order to construct the building. So that proposed plan is back in front of us. Michelle, let me think here. There's a, I wanna get a motion opposed, dark discussion, I guess. There is a draft. I guess the.
So it was the DDA's recommendation.
You want it on page 49, right?
Mm-hmm. Page 49. Staff and city attorney revised a PAV agreement in conjunction with the applicant, draft the necessary access easement agreements, and bring them back to city council for consideration, most likely when the master deed by laws and exhibit D drawing are brought to you. So you really don't need to make them, I don't know that you really need a formal motion to move forward. This is more.
Well, so, so let me just, all right, so the, just for the audience, you know, Pete's here, his neighbor property owner. So at the November 16th DDA meeting, the proposal, the proposal that the DDA accepted as recommended for approval to council is that a temporary 29, approximately 29 space gravel parking lot be constructed on the vacant Forest Street lots, formerly known as 8077 and 8087. It's the southeast corner of Forest and Broad for those that are, that are in the directions. They need to close Jeffords between the alley and right up to Dancer's Edge for a period of up to eight months. So the, the Jeffords will be closed at the alley over by, you guys, just past the gas station, Marathon that is now supposed to say BP. And there's a, the, the DDA put a restriction that if it goes past eight months, there's a $500 per day penalty.
If, for any time that the road has to be closed.
For any time that the road has to be closed beyond that point, right.
And it's even open on weekends.
I'm sorry?
And they said that they'll encourage it to be open on the weekends whenever they can if they're not working on the weekends.
Right.
Right, yeah, sorry, I was talking to this. So, so the goal is to have it open on the weekends whenever possible. You know, there might be times where they're working on Saturday that that's not possible.
You mean have the road open?
The road open. They're gonna open it back up on, on Friday at 5:00. The intent is if there's no weekend work, that they'll pull stuff off and open the road for the weekends.
Really?
Yep. The closure of the 13 spaces north of the site would be permitted during construction with the understanding that it would be accessible frequently as construction progresses. So if they're not working on that side of the building, they can open those up so that they're available for the hardware store, the bakery, the bank, that type of thing. They, they need to use a portion of 3045 Broad as staging, which is shown on here. And their employee, construction employee parking is also gonna use a portion of 3045 Broad. forty-five Broad. So, those were the, the conditions that were discussed by the DDA. Staff technically issues a right of way permit for the closure of the street. So, pending our approval and acceptance of the plan, they would approve the closure of Jeffords through the, through an official right of way permit. It would be referenced in the master deed or in the development agreement, or the PUD agreement, I guess we're calling it. But the, I think the action tonight is, does council have any questions about the proposed plans or the conditions that the DDA came up with two weeks ago or eleven days ago? And if not, we need to accept them, I guess. Julie?
I just have a question, a clarification, because Matt working out with the new twenty-nine parking spots. Do I understand there's gonna be two access points into that parking area?
Yeah, one off the alley and one off the Broad.
And why would we not have one off Forest?
The slight distance to the intersection isn't...
Thank you.
...an option.
So anyone parking in those spots, they'd have to walk up to Forest Street to access the sidewalk?
Right.
We'd get them across the dancer's edge, you know, into the business area.
Is that what the, the thing with the wavey black line is, is, is a reestablishment of the crosswalk there?
No, that was, that would be if there was a connection to a drain.
Okay.
If this wasn't going to be...
So, so you'll exit the parking lot, onto a sidewalk, and then follow the crosswalk.
And then follow the crosswalks, correct.
Okay, thank you.
So it kinda addressed your concern.
Yes, thank you. I do have one real quick clarification for you. You've got a construction schedule. You notice at the bottom it says thirty-two weeks, eight months. That's not the total time of construction. That's the, that, the eight months is the timeframe that the DDA is recommending to council on road closure before incurring that five hundred dollar a day penalty. The total weeks for construction is being estimated as, at sixty-two. The bracketed areas, those could happen simultaneously. But I wanna make sure that you all understand the difference, that there's an eight week period of time that, that construction will happen, and that's associated with the road closure and limited access to parking. But the overall total construction is estimated at sixty-two weeks.
A year.
Okay?
Twenty.
I'm sorry?
A year?
Yes. Well, a little bit more than a year.
So, the, from what I've heard, I think it's a nice alternative from the last meeting. The parking place across from the temporary one where the twenty-nine is, where it is paved right now, is that still open and usable then by the public?
The, the ones between the staging area and the employee parking area?
Yes.
Yes, that would still be...
And they had access off of Broad Street there?
They'd still access, and construction traffic will go down the gravel mat and across Jeffords, so you won't have the conflict between construction and non-construction traffic.
I have one other comment.
Go ahead, please.
The, the, the people that are going to be doing, involved in this area most of the time are gonna figure it out, okay? They'll figure out where they're gonna park, they'll figure out that I can't park here when I used to park here, and that this is gonna work. What I'm concerned about are those people that don't have a clue, and they come here with their bike and their carriages, their strollers with the mothers, and they don't have a clue where to go, okay? So I have a suggestion that if possible, and I don't know why they couldn't be, that we can direct people that come on to, off of Main Street and come up Jeffords, and they say, oh my gosh, I can't go anywhere now, 'cause it's blocked off, so I gotta go down that space behind, you know, there, but I can't get there, so I'm gonna have to go down the alley somehow there. How do we get the people from there to the space by the cemetery that they can have easy access to the park? To put a bike in, to put a stroller in, when basically the space that they have now is blocked off?
Which spaces are you talking about?
The ones on Jeffords.
The ones on Jeffords, the ones on Forest Street that are there now, you know, I mean, in front of Joe, you know, Pete was just here, you know, where they're along in front of the studio there. These people park there, you know, I'm always fearful that some kid is gonna get hit because the mother has got the kid here, getting the stroller out, and you know, Ray sees it every day, the kid's running out trying to get, you know, there, and, and I'm always suggesting, I didn't stop and tell people, you know, you can park down by the cemetery and it's easy access and there's no traffic. How do we get people there? Can we just get some temporary signs that says...
What's a temporary sign?
You know, trail access parking and get it down there so we can point them down Broad Street?
Right, 'cause they can still access it taking Broad.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Cousins wants to get one of the flipping signs he can stand at the corner.
I don't want that, but that's not a bad suggestion. If you'd help me out with that, I'd...
I'll bring the spray paint.
Gotcha. No, I, I would, if we can just get the people that normally don't, don't have a clue where they can get, how they can park those, they'll, they'll park where they can, they'll be parking on Main Street, they'll be parking in every other parking space they can, instead of getting a space where it really is excellent access to the trail down there.
If they could set park access, take Broad and Grand.
What's that?
A lot safer.
Yes.
By far, yeah, by far. So, so we can just get some temporary signs, I mean, you can buy them anywhere, you know?
At the heart of action.
Or you can have a main, you know, it's just...
Yeah, we have to meet uniform control.
We do that, I, I really think this will work out. It's not gonna be convenient, but, you know, you gotta break a bunch of eggs to make an omelet, and this is what's gonna happen, so.
I think the first couple of times, they'll go through there, and then the next time they'll come, they'll go, I don't wanna go with that. I know enough to go them around.
Yeah, well, they may.
Put a map on the website.
Yeah, and, and, exactly.
I just wanna make it easier for them, and also, as you said, safer.
Zach, you had your head up?
Yeah.
Um, I wanna start this by saying that I really like this building. Four stories I'm comfortable with, and I do understand that it's a difficult site to build because it's right to the lot lines. But also, this is the first time we've probably shut down an entire street for eight months for construction.
Correct.
And it ought to be done with care, especially since we don't have a lot of streets in that area. So that's my little preface to starting this. The total proposed time is eight months. When does phase one turn into phase two? How many weeks is that?
The, the phase one being everything above that bracket, so, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten. So you're, it's, it's estimated, so, ten weeks?
Is there a five hundred dollar fine a day if it doesn't open to one-way traffic after phase, this proposed phase one?
No, the phasing is, the phasing isn't necessarily the same as the eight month schedule. You'll be, there'll be some times during phase two that, that's part of the eight months. So, how can I put it?
It's, it, I'm kinda reading it as it'll be open to one-way traffic when it's convenient.
Um...
There's, you can't...
Well, on the weekends it will be. I mean, if you consider it an inconvenience.
On the weekends it might be two-way. Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, it's not just one-way, I mean, it's two-way if they can do it. If they got a big crane sitting there that takes up the lane, then it'll be one-way. It'll be what they can do for the...
And...
But it's, it's intended, it's intended that there are other weekends it'll be two-way. But I think, I think where you're going, Zach, is, is they've indicated that they don't need to occupy the parking spaces or the road after the eight month, up to eight month point. Now, we, we were pushing for six at the DDA, and she was a little more comfortable given not knowing when they would start with eight. So if, if things continue to stay mild, they may start in January. But she hasn't even submitted her building permit to the county yet because she doesn't have all the contingencies listed, lifted, not listed, lifted. So, you know, they're, they're thirty to forty-five days out from, even if we grant it, if they ran down there right now, the earliest this would start is, you know, mid-January, and who knows what the weather's gonna look like then. It's more likely that they'll start in April.
So does the period start from when it's closed or from when we say okay?
No, the eight month period starts from when they need to start construction.
Okay.
When, so when they start going out and prepping the plan, putting up the plans, they...
And they're not gonna keep it closed unnecessarily. If they get done with the exterior work and the flat work on the outside, and where it can open up sidewalks and get, you know, where they're working inside, this probably shifts to a smaller area of impact, which is, they'd probably bring the stuff in on the garage door.
But do we have anything in, in writing requiring? That, that we're concerned if it's, you say you can close it for eight months.
It will be in the PUD agreement.
Okay.
That, I don't know how you would say the exact wording, but very similar to the wording that's in the letter. It, it, there has to be, there has to be some trust in here that when they say, when they say they will work to open the, the road on weekends when there isn't any work happening, they give us the notice that it's gonna be open and that we are able to then let people know that it'll be open. But it's, I don't know that, I'm not sure how you put in specific dates when it will be open versus when it won't be open, because we don't know. That, 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 there's just no way to say exact dates. But if there's language that you can think of to tighten it up, I'm...
Well, if, if it was clear to determine when phase one became phase two, but it sounds like it's gonna be kind of mushy as far as the impact on the street.
Correct. Yeah, just because they go into phase two doesn't mean that the impact will be less. In some situations, it could be more.
But it's about sixteen weeks, and it rises out your, I mean, the line is, if you just match up the task in phase two to the schedule.
Despite the monstrosities from the architect at the last meeting, I did go around Ann Arbor. There are several six and taller story buildings that are in construction to the lot line. The sidewalks closed or has scaffolding, or parking is closed. If just the parking were closed, that would, and the sidewalk, that'd be an additional twenty-four feet. My understanding is the need for the extra space is because the construction folks are gonna be using a sky tracks instead of a tower train, tower crane. Zach, correct?
That's my understanding. Is that correct now?
If we were, uh, sky tracks, it'll be easier to maneuver and will be less of a burden down the road than if we were to bring in a crane. We're hoping to do it all with sky tracks.
All right. Also, I was in Chicago and they're doing really tall buildings right at the street line. The, so, and there won't be any staging at all on Jeffords or the parking except for what's going up that day?
Correct.
And the stones that are going to be in the temporary parking, does that create a burden on the city that those are there? Does, does the city take ownership of those stones, or do we have to pay to have those disposed in the future?
This, this, the, some of the base that's going to be in this temporary parking lot will be the stones that are currently in one fifteen.
Yeah, a large, large stone.
And then there are, then they will add to that, to cap, the four inch cap that's gonna be on.
And are, are, is there gonna be expense to the city to, to have that removed?
It really depends on what the long-term plan ends up being for thirty forty-five Broad and whether it's, you know, reusable on that site, or, you know, that's gonna be developed somehow, so it would get removed with that project. Or used in that project as base.
I mean, I would, I would think that if we wanted them to pull up at the end of a year, we reserve that right, right? To have them pull up the gravel and put down that seat, I mean, and...
I, I just wanna make sure that we got our...
I mean, that's, that's fair.
...not necessarily a burden. And, and they're likely to be valued.
Because everything goes back, everything goes back how it is today, right?
Yep.
Hey, who'd you say, uh, everything goes that way?
I mean, I would think that we would want to reserve the right to have them remove the gravel parking lot if that's what we want, right?
If the team doesn't want it, yes. Then you wouldn't, then you don't want the temporary lot to be continued to use after it's constructed?
Well, I think it's an, an option that we, the city could request it be removed, but not requiring. I think I'm all good. Thank you.
Other council comments on the temporary plan?
I'd like to, uh, this way than previous one.
Okay. So can, you know, we just have a simple motion to accept the temporary...
We don't have a motion yet?
Review of parking and road closure and staging plan and instruct staff to, to, to incorporate into, into the PUD agreement?
What do you wanna make?
Uh... Show on page forty-nine?
Forty-nine? Yeah, I'll make the motion on DDA.
There is an action.
Well, I saw...
Do you decide to place a motion to accept?
Yeah, just so it's clear where we're going, right?
I'll second.
Motion by Tal, second by Fisher?
Yeah.
Yeah, to accept DDA recommendation as it's written in there?
Right.
Yeah, what was the other discussion items, though?
The, all of them. Right, the one-year, retain the ability to have the parking lot removed, or if we request that they can use it, and open up everything if they can, specifically in the summer when it's a little busier. What was the other thing? And if you kind of open up lot lists right here.
Yeah, I think it was right here.
And, yeah, what about here? So that would give back the access easement, then?
So, so they're required to post a bond of some type?
They will be as part of the right-of-way permit.
How much of a bond will they post?
It will depend on what the construction costs associated with that road closure will be.
Okay.
Okay? But we'll, we'll make sure that it's essential enough that...
They can fix the roads if needed.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, to call the questions? Please call over.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Peasants?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes.
Very good, motion carries. We have a successful plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. New business item L2 is a discussion item of the Baker Road property annexation, as requested by the petitioners. So I'm gonna turn this over to, to you.
I'll, I'll come on your phone.
Okay. Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, hello, my name's Bill Higgins. I'm here with my brother-in-law, Dave Wilkie. My sister's in attendance as well. Wanted to, as, as the city gets closer to considering our annexation request, I wanted to talk about the team that we've put together. You're gonna hear from MCI, who, Tom, who's a local resident here. You're gonna hear from Jim Eisler, Peter's building. He's gonna answer some of the questions regarding the, the letter we sent in. But I'd like to start off with talking about our family and our involvement in the city. We decided in two thousand and fifteen, my brother, my dad, my sister, to purchase the land that we're discussing, and we called it Baker Road Land LLC. The idea was to team up with the other parcel next door, which abuts up to Dexter Crossing, to have a nice rectangular piece of land that we thought would be a benefit to the community, especially considering that the Dexter became a city. Higgins, our family has an extensive background in utilities, underground utilities. I personally did a few projects years ago with Ed Lobdell. And with Jim, I've known Jim for twenty years. We've done quite a few developments with him. Most notably was the Dexter Crossing project. I remember when he took that over from, from the Bonar Development. When we went in there and looked, looked that site over, it was pretty rough at the time. I realized some of it was the economy, but to Jim's credit, he did take that over, and I drove through it tonight, and it's, looks presentable, and there's only a few lots left in there. So we think the team that we've put together is a local team. We've... We've, we live around here, we've done work here. Dave's going to talk about some of the projects that we've done with the city. If you were to consider this annexation in, in our proposal, you know, our workmanship, we believe is above satisfactory. Some of the projects that we worked on, we problem solved to work out problems that came up. I don't believe there was any major issues, change orders, that sort of thing. So that's what we would keep doing if, if we could move forward. I'm looking for someone in the council to champion this project. I think it would, the long-term benefits would be substantial. You would have economies to scale on all of your sewer fees that would be generated, the water fees, you generate quite a bit of revenue there. I know the schools are, would like to have more, more students. So anyway, just wanted you to, to know more about who the team is and why we decided to do this. Dave would like to talk about some of the projects. Most, one of the, one of the most recent ones was the wellhouse that we did at the school, the high school. The reason I think that's important to discuss tonight a little bit is, you know, there's a possibility on this development to put in a new well. And one of the things that caught my eye when, when they did the sewer report was the, the budget for the new well and the iron removal seemed considerably high to me. Dave can discuss what we did in two thousand ten and actually give you some numbers because it's similar to what could possibly happen on, on this development we're talking about.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dave Wilkie. Just so like Bill briefly touched on, I've been a project manager at Douglas Higgins for twenty years now. And as many may know, Higgins has been a local, family-owned construction company that's been doing work in Washtenaw County for over fifty years. Myself, I've been working for twenty-five years as a municipal engineer and consultant and a construction manager. And Bill and I have been personally involved over the last twenty years with over eight million dollars worth of work that's been completed here within the city limits of Dexter. Some of this goes back to, you said, Cedars to Dexter, Dexter Crossing. We've done Westridge to Dexter, done the work on the sanitary and also various manhole projects around town. As Dan can attest, one of the more complex problems that we ran into our projects was the two thousand ten water system improvements project where we installed over seven thousand millimeter of ductile iron water main throughout the city and constructed a new wellhouse at the, at the high school and then had a building addition, addition of installed a treatment plant. Definitely, looking at the cost involved, I know this is going back a couple of years, but and, and Tom with Midwest Consulting and Jim will talk about the numbers a little bit further, but, you know, we installed or constructed a new wellhouse at the high school for around three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And the building addition over the treatment plant was for right around two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. So take that in consideration when you're reviewing the numbers that's going to be, you know, further discussed on that there's certain market value numbers that you build in, then there's also, you know, projection numbers that are meant to kind of, you know, plan for conservative estimates. And, and like Bill mentioned, those are very similar projects, I believe, that could be, you know, comparable to what needs to be done with the parcel out there. Last, I'd like to just mention that, you know, our group is really excited to partner with the city and try to develop a plan. We think it's a great parcel out there that offers a lot of unique characteristics that would be a great asset to the community.
Thanks, guys. I'm going to hand out a presentation I have kind of put together. It's mostly for informational purposes, so I'm going to try to breeze through this. The meeting goals, or the meeting goal that we had in mind for this meeting tonight was to continue the dialogue about the annexation of the property. Can I handle these? Pass around?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, like I was saying, to continue the discussion about the thoughtful development of the Sloane Kingsley Parcels. There's the intent to develop, develop the site. The goal being to annex the property into the city and the owners desire action on this. As you flip through this, you'll notice the introductions that Bill and David talked about, but I'm going to skip right to the page that's noted since we've last met. It's been about a year. We've developed a number of land use area plans. We've continued dialogue with potential stakeholders and developers, in particular with the senior care component. Studies in the water and sanitary sewer systems have been completed and the studies in the san, of the sanitary and water systems have been reviewed by the city and the development team. As a matter of context, I know Paul, welcome back to council. I did include some information here regarding context in case there was people here that weren't familiar with where we were at. But this is the property south of the city of Dexter, known as the Sloane Kingsley Parcels. It's comprised of about five properties totaling about two hundred and thirty-seven point six acres. The ideas for the property were to design and efficiently develop a single-use or a quality residential development with a mix of uses, both single-family and attached, single-family homes. There are opportunities for other land uses. We think there's also appropriate areas for preservation of woodlands and wetlands. And then we wanted to encourage through our design, the pedestrian connectivity throughout the site and then how it connects and interacts with the current areas within the city. I've also included a copy of the land use area plan that had been used for discussion. It has an active adult, a multi-family component, has a detached, single-family component, estate lots, and a hundred and seven point nine acres of open space with a total of four hundred and eight units, which is a density of about one point six five dwelling units per acre. I just included copies of this water and sanitary studies that everybody's pretty familiar with, but we've looked at. And then I included in the next three pages, some thoughts that the development team and our group had as the design team were using conversation. We converted those reports to kind of an REU basis and then allocated percentages. And I'm going to skip, or I'll generally say I have these broken out as far as the water tank, well and distribution center, water treatment system, we have them broken out by that, and then the sanitary. And then we have the hard costs and the soft costs identified. For example, the water tank, well distribution system, we think it's about nine point seven percent allocated to the development of the project. Boil that down, hard costs and soft costs, that's about five hundred dollars per unit. Water treatment system improvements at the bottom of that page, hard and soft costs, that's about a thousand thirty-six dollars per unit. The next page, sanitary sewer system, we're looking at the treatment system, those improvement costs. And you'll note in the hard costs that some of the increased secondary treatment is more attributable to our development or our uses of our development at about thirty-one point eight percent, which is about three thousand five hundred liter per unit. And then the sanitary sewer extension, you'll note that we believe would be a hundred percent allocated to the development to get the sanitary sewer there, which is about eleven hundred and sixteen dollars a unit. All that, boiling all those very detailed reports down to one simple chart there at the back, the summary per projected unit of hard and soft construction costs. The estimated cost in those reports were about fifteen million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And if we break that out and allocate the percentages to the four hundred and eight REUs that this development would have, we're at about six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars per unit. That being said, there were a number of questions and a, a few meetings that I've attended with various stakeholder, stakeholders with regard to the projects and opportunities with the project being in the city or the township. Was there an annexation opportunity or four twenty-five agreement opportunity? The owners have requested of the city, requested that the site be annexed to the city for many different reasons. The home typology that we see at the site continues to be single-family and attached, single-family with senior component. As far as layout goes, you know, we had to put something down on paper, so we put together the land use area plan. It starts to formulate the ideas of how the uses would be around the property and how the natural features would be preserved and we can go and get as granular as you want on that detail. It has preservation park areas, access to Baker Road, Dexter Crossings. And we understand the cost per unit for infrastructure improvements for the sanitary and water system. What we envision as next steps would be that there would be action on the annexation. The owners are requesting annex on the annexation and some definition as how that moves forward towards action from the council.
So, Tom, let me, yeah, first of all, welcome back. You're certainly a known local, as Bill and Dave say, local team. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, you know, I'm just staring, for example, at the sanitary sewer system slide that you just passed out. Again, a version of this was in the packet in the letter that you sent over. Without, without trying to micromanage how you got to the percentages. And assuming that the estimated costs are somewhere in the ballpark. They could be ten percent high, they could be ten percent low, they could be, maybe they could be twenty percent high, twenty percent low, I don't know, but they're big numbers. Does the Baker Road LLC team expect the city to pay six point six million to cover the difference? To do these things? Because I, I mean, I look at this and I, I realize what you're saying you would attribute to the new development.
Correct.
But the remainder of these items, it isn't like we can just build a part of a well or a part of a clarifier or a part of a whatever secondary treatment grid pump, I mean. And some of these things we're already doing.
Correct.
And some of these things we're already doing. You know, the, the screen and the grid pump, we've talked about that, we're taking that on. But whatever the difference is, is it the developer's expectation that the city would pay the rest of that? Because the, what, if I didn't, and I realize what, what Dave was saying about the cost of the project versus what's estimated here, you know, like for the water, for example. You know, there's some stark differences between the numbers that he mentioned versus the numbers here. And I think we're probably forecasting worst case maybe in some of these numbers. But our, you know, our, our water and sewer rates, as you know, living here, are already high and they're going to go up again because we're doing some of the things that we need to do. Are you, are, is your team expecting us to take on all the other costs? When we don't otherwise need them? I mean, tough question, I know, maybe you don't have an answer, but that's the first thing that hit me when I looked at your scenario.
Sure, sure. I guess I would bring Jim up here too and maybe speak to this a little bit. All the, all the items aren't necessarily fully attributable to the REUs that would be required for the site. As you mentioned, some of the things are currently being undertaken, some of the other things were on study to be completed in the near future and so on. I think what we needed was a starting point. I think the reports give a starting point with some study and analysis. We have some ideas and some how that fits to the site, but it's the starting point of a dialogue about what happens here. And I'll let Jim commit to whatever they're willing to, given the Higgins family, commit to whatever they're willing to do there.
Well, and then, and then the second, the second part, just the second part of the question. Can you update us on your conversations as a team with SIO? Obviously, the land is in SIO Township and, I mean, I've, I've talked to the supervisor there a number of times. I'd be interested to hear your characterization of the relationship with those discussions with them and whether that's positive or.
Sure.
Please.
I'm going to have Jim.
Hey, Jim Heisler, Peter's building. Welcome to the council numbers. See most of you for years and different capacities around here. Yes, the first one is to, the, the goal is to start a dialogue on this and to come to some type of conclusion because we are coming from different directions. Obviously, your goal is to look out for the best interest of the city. And ours is to have a development that is a benefit to the city and a benefit to the people that live there at a reasonable cost and something that is, you know, can be undertaken as a reasonable enterprise and a reasonable business decision to move forward. We're looking at this is, one, a simple answer to the question is, we don't, we intend to pay for what we'd be using. Uh, some of these reports, I think this is where we, we're trying to figure out the dialogue to have is probably just the question Sean's asking is where is the point to increasing the clarifier, some of these things that are attributable to adding capacity to the system? However, we're looking for four hundred and ten, not seven, eight hundred, a thousand. Depends how you want to read these reports. How do we come to a number that's attributable? We, yeah, you have four twenty-five agreements that probably need more capacity. We're, you know, we don't think we should pay for that if we're, you know, the people that are utilizing our homes or that we'd be building, you know, that, that isn't a burden that they should bear. We do think that, you know, if there's something being built, our portion of it, if it need to be paid upfront, again, I'll quote, our portion of it, that we would, that we'd come to a mutual agreement that would be ours, you know, we're willing to pay for. And that's where to work through these numbers to see if there is a common ground to do that. Because, you know, the water system, right now, to my knowledge, you, you have to use odd even during the summers. You'd like more capacity and everybody's going to benefit from that. Even the current users, it'd be a better system. And those type of things that we think we should pay our fair share, but we've put in wells and systems for, we've got one in Salim, it's three hundred and forty-eight and I'm, you know, the cost of what that is, you know, that was about a million bucks. Now, this is, you, you operate a little different, it's bigger, we understand that. But some of this is benefiting everyone, not just the city in the whole and actually helps spread that around. You have more ratepayers and taxpayers in the future that help do that. So we're looking for a way to talk about these numbers and come to, you know, to grips or come to a discussion on a specific fact of what is this, from the city standpoint, what do they feel is fair and reasonable and what can, you know, from our point, what we feel is fair and reasonable? You know, ours is we're willing to pay for the portion that's attributable that needs to be increased for this development. We said that from the beginning, we don't change it. You know, there might be different, I'll say, there might be a vast difference of opinion that may or may not be bridged on what that number is and how we reach it. And if it isn't, we want to come to an agreement that it isn't and we'll figure out what the next steps are from there. So that's where we're looking at this. So I sure understand some of the question, I think it's a reasonable one. And that's what this was to bring out and the way we looked at, looking through the numbers isn't, you know, analyzing a report to say, all right, we break it up this way. You, if you're break out that we need ten million dollars to do this, we probably aren't, we'll never come to that mutual meaning of the minds. We'd like to try to figure that out sooner rather than later. So the process to do that. Then to answer Sean's second question on the township, we've had several discussions with them. Obviously, they do not have water and sewer. To do the type of project they would be looking at, they do have an ordinance that does allow for onsite utility, basically a wastewater treatment plant and a community well, which, you know, those are viable alternatives given all the, you know, word out there about phosphorus discharges. phosphorus discharges and all that, it's doable. The technology is there and it's very, and it is cost effective. So, the answer is yes, we could probably talk something township, they, they're aware we're here, and I've always been upfront, said we've been talking to them. We think it would be a better project, a better use of the land, a better asset to the community and the people there, giving them a bigger variety of homes by having the availability in the sewer and the, some of the zoning that we feel the city is more, has the infrastructure in place to allow, that's probably the best way to say it. So, we're, we're here now trying to answer this question and depending on the answer to that is where we, we're able to move forward in a mutual manner on the annexation or have to look at Plan B. But ours is, is try to figure out, I think Sean's got the big question and I agree with him, is we need to find a way to answer that. And how do we come to at least talking to the engineers, presenting some other report, more detail, you know, in short order here, you know, we're, we're open to that discussion.
What goes after the policy? I'll, I'll let the junior member.
No, we're, we're...
Whoa. I've been waiting two years for that.
Junior.
There's a big difference in the numbers. If you do the OHM and the FNB, it's about 12.9 million. If you do this end, it's 2.086. That is a huge difference and I, I, okay, I'll start by saying that I want this project to succeed, but it has to make sense for the city. The city has to be kept whole. The other ratepayers in the city shouldn't be subsidizing this. Now, naturally, because it's farther from our plants, they're going to be taking a little bit more than folks who live right next to the plants pay, such as myself. So, that's, that's what I'm looking for, is this going to make sense for the city? And in that case, God is in the details. I guess I'll start by saying, when you bring these, again, put page numbers on them so we can refer to them more quickly instead of everyone flipping through the pages. Just for reference for folks, if this were on individual wells and septic systems, individual septic systems are 4,000 to 14,000 per lot, individual wells are 4,000 to 7,000, so just that alone for 408 units would be 3.6 to 8.5 million, again, for perspective. And for the, I don't think it's a one-to-one, a community well system for multiple houses like Alfa Meadows or in Salim because they don't have to provide the fire protection that the city's required to. They can have, they can have a dry well or the trucks have to come in, and that's something that we have to provide, so we can't just provide the minimum amount of water.
The one in Salim does.
For three-hour fire?
Yep.
It's got storage?
Yep.
It's got water treatment?
Yep.
And it only costs you how much?
That one was, and that was 12 years ago, about 1.1, 1.2 million.
But you're only proposing 600,000 for water and, and this is larger than the one in Salim?
Well, again, there, there's several components here, so that's, where it's hard to sit here and talk about within general...
Yeah, well, 200,000 for the well distribution system and tank and 422, so that's half of what you said something 12 years ago.
Those are the numbers from the report, and by percentage of what we've allocated by RE.
Yeah, they just, they just took a percentage of the report numbers, Zach.
Right.
That's nine points, like, that's 9.7% of 300,000 is 29,1, I didn't check this, but it's 29. 10% would be 30, right?
We tried to match it back to the numbers used in the report. You know, if you take percentages back, it should all match back to the report.
So, OHM said 6 million and change for water system upgrades, including tank, well, treatment system. You say you can do that for 1.3.
You know, that's the portion we feel that people, to ours, the, the development that we're going to proposing, we feel that's the portion of those costs that go to there because water treatment, to my knowledge, you don't have a full-fledged, you don't have the $4 million worth of water treatment at the current time.
The issue with the water and why it's so expensive compared to what Don was talking about is because we did not build a new iron and arsenic filtration plant when we built the fish well. We did, we did, wait, we do it with chemicals. We have no idea what the water quality is that we would find if we can even find water on the site, which is a whole nother problem. So, if we find it, you have to test it and you have to decide, and it's been challenging. Using the chemicals isn't like everything since sliced bread. Yeah, it's cheaper, but it has other impacts on the system. But if you get to a certain level of iron, you can't just use polyphosphate, you have to build a plant, so...
And there haven't been any test wells on the site, have there?
No, there has not.
When are you going to do test wells?
So, that's why it's estimated at a high level of having to build a whole iron filtration plant because that's like the worst-case scenario of what we would find if they have a high iron content.
When are you going to do test wells so these numbers can get more accurate?
Not, not until we know if we can come to an agreement on an annexation. Now, an iron, okay, do we sup, do we just take and sit there, we do a well, okay, our well will go there, we're just going to pay for only us, no one else gets the benefit, then we'll do a well that fits us. You're taking that water and running it through the rest of the city. Why shouldn't the rest of the, if they're getting the benefit of the extra water and a filtration system they don't have, why should only the people that are putting that in pay for it? I don't have a problem paying for what everybody else is paying for, but if you're going to upgrade to something way better, you're in everybody, there's somebody's opinion that it's way better, why should these 400 people pay for the other 2,000? That is one of our questions. We don't have a problem paying for our share of that if that's going to matter, or else we get that water for us.
All right. My next general comments are going to be, this is a challenge for you, and again, I, I think this project would be beneficial if it's done well. We already have enough houses that look like this.
Give me that page that was on, tell me what that one is.
And like this, we already have enough of these. The folks want the largest state lots, like the three that are proposing to back, they should go to a township where they can have horses and all that stuff. My challenge for you is to provide housing options that are not currently available here so that the kid who graduates high school, gets his college degree, can come back and live in Dexter and not have to wait till he's 45 years old with a six-year, six-figure income. And, thanks.
There are a number of things to me that I think that could be beneficial to the city, okay, if this was done. Let me ask the questions and you give me the answers that you can provide.
Sure.
Off of this site, would we have an additional access to the industrial site of our industrial park?
That would be purely, we're not opposed to planning it in there when it's been brought up prior that the industrial park, the, the landowner that owns the park that abuts it said that they didn't want to have one through, that came from somewhere in the council, but we're not opposed to it if that's what is planned for.
If in fact there was an agreeable process for us, you're agreeable to that?
Yes.
Second, the second question is, you have said you would provide or give us access to a well site if in fact Courtney is correct and we do have decent water there and we could do that and we would, there is access to a different well site, we know that we need one, that could be a site. You're willing to provide space and opportunity for us to test, do all the things to find that out.
Correct.
It's correct. To what Zach's led to, what you'd be, would be the percentage, and I realize this is a, either a loaded question, maybe impossible answer in this day and age, you know, at this point in time, is there a percentage that you would define that would be affordable housing, whatever that is?
I always have a tough time seeing what affordable is.
Got you, I understand.
Well, I can define it for you. The 80th percentile of the, the community spends no more than 30% of their income on housing per month.
That's probably very hard provided any market rate, non-subsidized, man.
Non-subsidized?
Yep.
So, it hasn't been subsidized, so this is not to be, this is not going to be a site that, we match what Zach is talking about or even what the word affordable housing is, because we have none in the city right now.
If that is the definition we use for affordable housing, it would probably not. Now, we've talked about some different things we could do that would be definitely lower cost than some of the other projects that have been around or that are there currently, and I do have some ideas, but you're going to get into higher density for that. And, and there'd have to be some ways of what your requirements are as far as parking, curbing, some of that, that all plays into it, dollars versus market rate versus subsidizing. I'm sure, obviously, I, the whole group would be willing to be innovative if that's of any help, to try to come up with something that would work. I'm talking with the township about that when, as part of our discussions with them, I'll be quite frank about it, but it, it's still all market rate, none of it's quote subsidizing.
What is the, the number of housing units that SIO Township zoning would allow for you to have on that piece of property?
We're in discussions on how, right now, it's somewhere, if you use every crook in the 200 range, and I'm not going to, that's just a discussion number, that is not, but there, we're talking about a few innovative ways to raise that with some incentives that they would have.
But you'd have to raise that significantly, I mean, I'm not saying double, but you, this is 408, correct?
Yes.
You'd have to raise that close to double to match up what you need to do here, correct?
That is correct.
And you could still afford to put in a, a well system and a sewer system, a wastewater treatment system that would...
That is correct.
Be financially beneficial at that level?
That is correct. We're, we're, we're doing another one, it's about half that size, or working on it in Salim, the numbers are very feasible. Zach or Michelle's had the numbers right on onsite well and septic with the technologies out there and with the surface water discharge, it's very competitive, if not actually, I'm becoming, it's almost preferred in Washtenaw County with the requirements for an onsite system.
Well, as you probably well know, Jim, I have, this is like deja vu all over again. I was here when we approved the first three major units development here in the, in the city and, and don't regret the decision to do that, okay, be quite honest. I wouldn't regret the decision to do this one here if I felt it was going to be beneficial to the city again. I will tell you though that as a member of the Huron River watershed council for over 46 years representing the city of Dexter or the township, I am strongly opposed to onsite treatment. The watershed council just fought for six years and won the battle with Rock Financial to eliminate their proposed site that they had that was on the Huron River. It took a lot of money and a lot of effort, realize we had a little help from Bill Ford in that process, but the fact is, is that it took us six years to fight that. I would like to remind the council that Trout Unlimited would also be involved in fighting this process because they have just spent a lot of money and effort in cleaning up the creek and putting in trout, and I would like to remind us that we are, that this would be then, as affluent that would come in upstream from our park and would run right through our park, no matter how you claim you clean it or don't clean it, okay? They are, we know that there are facts that there are always accidents, but there, there are statistics show you that private type of plants are much worse up in the efficiency of operation than, than the public plants there are, thanks to guys like Dan and others that do it, and the certification that they have and the watchfulness that they have from both the state and their operators. With that all being said, if I had my brothers of 400 houses being built in this area, I want them on the south side of my city going to the freeway rather than coming through my town.
And, you know, I agree, and actually, I had here when it was first being worked over.
Yeah, well.
So, it's been a while, but it's, you know, the only thing is, I probably respectfully disagree with the technology and the treatment plants now and professional operators and way they're meant, because I checked into this before I, you know, we brought this public, is the cost of increasing to the phosphorus limits with the new, new style plants and that, then...
We're fighting right now both the city of Chelsea, Lockalpines, city of Dexter and city of Ann Arbor, all fighting with it, and, and have a suit against them right now, okay, against the, the state right now and their phosphate levels, okay? So, we're not going to be backing off of this, I guarantee you. It's not going to be something that will be just to walk through to say, okay, we're going to do it because we'll...
I, I just want to let that out there right now, but, no, okay, we understand.
So, I have a question that I, I guess I don't know the answer to. This is the best one. Thornton Farms.
Yes.
Maybe I have the name wrong, but I'll put it.
No, that's it.
Jackson and Parker.
Jackson and Parker.
That has a onsite, right?
Yes.
And that's tributary to our Mill Creek watershed, right?
It is correct. You want to know some of the, the violations that they've had over the years, it's not as pretty as you would.
But it hasn't affected, I mean...
Is that long distance, is the long distance between point A and point B that you're continuing up there?
Well, I, that's, that's my point, but there's also, you know, they, they don't have any different requirements for operators certifications for onsite one than they do a public one. I mean, you still have to have a certified operator that passes the same test, whether it's D, C, B, A, whatever size requirement.
I agree, it's the oversight and the, and the, the willingness to be vigilant in the process, okay? And remember, that's not run by anybody other than the association that's right there that runs that, owns that property, okay? And they, they will...
It's a, it's a similar subset to, to what we are, I mean, ours is run by people too.
Correct. Correct. But there's, if you want to look at the statistic, I'll bring you statistics, okay?
I'm just saying, in fairness to that technology and what's occurred on our, on our largest tributary, which we're very proud of, being the downstream end of, there's at least one that exists in a, in a large plant that, and I...
Do not disagree with that at all.
In 15 years, I've not read one article about a problem related to that. So, how do you, so, I guess then, how, how do you propose, how would you like to try to answer those questions?
Well, if, if that the question, what we can do is we prepare, written, you know, our analysis of why we feel, you know, my line and my line out, because we lined it up exactly with the reports, so if you want, you know, the engineers could look back at it and agree or disagree with our position, probably, then I do some of both for now. And then you guys can read their analysis and we'd like to get right back to it and say, okay, we, we have some common ground to talk about it or we don't. To answer your question specifically, which I think is the big question that needs to be answered.
I think that question needs to be answered because, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I, I get what you're saying about, you know, the water that comes out of the well here would be, might be dispersed to the city over here, but I, I don't know, I don't know, the, the difference in what you're offering to what the estimate cost is, is very large at this point in time, and it seems problematic to me with the difference that's on the table. And it seems problematic to me with the difference that's on the table. So if we could figure out how to either firm those up or discuss, I'm open to the discussion, but, I mean, right now, that's the start question to me. Because we haven't even talked about, you know, other costs.
Green sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, there's other stuff that goes into this beyond just these numbers, which we were looking at in my forecast, we zoomed in on water and sewer because they're obviously good questions. But there's other stuff that comes into play too, that is gonna add long-term cost to the...
And I can't disagree, there's also some significant tax dollars that we can work on that. I guess, in our opinion, a lot of the other ones, I would think could be worked out. That's not, maybe they couldn't, but I think there's a more reasonable chance, because this is the elephant in the room of the cost here, the vast difference of what is in some reports and the way we perceive those reports. So I think if we went down through on a line item basis, with our rationale, we might give, we'll give some opinions too. You may, you know, agree, disagree, rebut, whatever you'd like, but we'll give our reasons of why we feel this way and some options if possible.
I agree. I think we've had the big discussion, we need now to get down to the smaller discussion by whoever we appoint and make, you know, some headway or not.
That was gonna be what I was going to say here as well, Paul, was that I think there's an opportunity that the meetings need to happen to review the reports and maybe other items. Because I like committing people's time, because I know you all have so much of it. Maybe there's an opportunity to have a smaller group to review some specific items, in particular, the utility infrastructure and whatever other you guys wish.
Well, maybe for next meeting, we could have staff think about who they need to do in that discussion.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
How does this project benefit the city? I mean, what's the benefit? I mean, sure, there's urban planning and ecology and putting everything around. Utilities are already there, but I have no constituents clamoring for additional land for taxes or services. What can I tell these people that's gonna, how it's gonna benefit them? Is it gonna benefit their way of life somehow? Is it gonna benefit their property taxes somehow? Is it gonna benefit, is it gonna benefit the traffic? Will it benefit my merchants? Will it benefit anything? Or will it just be a continual, ongoing plan improvement, sewer improvement? We've gotten the city to where the point, it's financially and fiscally responsible, and it's at a very good point. I'm hesitant to commit to such a large-scale development without concrete evidence of benefit to the city. Everything's very, maybe sort of could be, might be, I can't play that. Give me some concrete reasons why this is beneficial to my city.
Well, we can give some we have already, is a growing community. I think part of it, you pointed out, when they started the fifteen, twenty years ago, you've grown, over-doubled your population, that's got you on a financially stable base.
And we're there.
Well, but once you stop, then you need to continue to grow at a reasonable pace. People that like your community, my kids, under a fortune, they were able to stay in Sleen is enough, because that's where they grew up, that's where I grew up, that's where my parents grew up. There is a very variety of houses, they move through, people move down. That's one of the things we're looking at here.
What's the biggest price on house? Hundred grand? That's affordable to me.
Add some of your benefits first here. You have the merchants, you mentioned that. You try to attract businesses, you want people to utilize the businesses around them. The schools, the community that has the age, they could move to a different home, more people come in, vibrant schools. You can go to the ones that are losing that, or some of the others. I really don't pick on some local communities, most of them know that their schools are shrinking, they're having very trouble attracting new people and population, because the people that are still a good majority, that want the houses, the bread and butter, are in that age range that have kids, want good schools. In Michigan, you know, they take some pretty good knocks, but overall, I mean, some groups from around the country, they have darn good public schools compared to a lot of states.
Well, I think a lot of it...
But that is what I think this would. You know, the answer to what's an affordable house, that's a really tough question to answer. I think, you know, when you get a definition of what HUD or what the academics say is affordable housing, that's as good as any. I think it is, is what somebody can afford, someone's happy to pay and live in the neighborhood, they hopefully can choose on their own and thrive it, whatever that is.
Oh, that's my very concern, Jim. A lot of these little old ladies are being gentrified right out of their houses.
And that's part of it. I'll just, we're talking with the township about doing some innovative ways of putting a portion of the houses that would work that way. We're not to that point, first I gotta see if we get water, sewer to do it. I can pretty much calculate what it costs in the township to do it. Here, I'm trying to figure that out before we spend any more money. We've already had forty grand on sewer studies.
Three years I proposed all development be by the expressway. I think all of it should be at the expressway, and then the township subsidized me for pushing it by the expressway. But that's not gonna happen, so.
Anyway, those are just some of the benefits we had before, and affordable, that's just a little question.
Well...
I'll tell you, more, I will put it this way, the more diverse population or groups of people I can serve, the less risk it is, the more successful a project can be for everyone, including the town. I mean, quicker we build it, quicker we move them in, the quicker you spread that base out. You're not overloading the schools in one area, you're not overloading the roads in another area, because you, we have families, the parents on one end of the sub and kids on the other with maybe a little larger home. So you get some of those synergies when you have a varied community that, you know, we're trying to propose.
Right, and I'm trying to find the good in it for the city, because I'm almost like, it's so, I'm being put over a barrel because I'm being vaguely threatened, well, not threatened, but being made aware of the possibility of a privately owned sewer and water on the outskirts of my city. And I've said this before, and I've been in a paper before, if there's a failure, I'm gonna see that crap coming through my town, literally. And I don't wanna see that, I've spent a lot of money. So for me to allow that, it's almost like I'm forced to agree, to a certain extent, to prevent that. And I don't want, I don't like that feeling, I don't like it at all. So I'm trying to...
You shouldn't live in fear.
I don't live in fear. I get mad and we take it to court. But I don't, it's not a failed threat, it's just something that's a possibility that I need to acknowledge. I may not be in council in two years or four years or whatever. This is something that's gonna be ongoing for years and years and years. You know, plants fail, plants need upgrade. We're the poster child for that.
Right.
And we are taking care of what hadn't been taken care of, and we've almost got to the point where we're a hundred percent. I'm hesitant to take on such a big project and add to what we're already doing without a little more clarity. I'm not opposed to more people moving out here. I have no right to say that, no more than any when I moved out here in seventy-four. I can't tell people what to do with your land, you know? All I can do is try and make sure what's being done to the city is best for the city. And not just now, not just for a tax base, not for a sewer point, not for a well, now, but for thirty, fifty, a hundred years in the future. And it's hard for me to grasp. Is this the best time? I don't know. Is it best for me to take the property in now and protect it? I don't know. I don't know. You're gonna have to convince me just a little bit more, I'm just not there yet.
Go ahead, Zach. Unless anyone else has anything to add as well. I would be happy to sit in, if the room's gonna be filled with engineers, I will require some paper to do doodles on while they're doing the engineering stuff. But I'd be happy to sit in.
I don't know what that says about your town, but...
Well, let's let Courtney and Dan get together and see what they need, think they need, or to have these conversations and come back to council and propose something. Do them two weeks in a row, or whatever time you need, Courtney.
We get to hear from our consultants today on why they handle with their numbers.
Patrick is here, and Blair and Elaine are here also. You can certainly have some questions.
Would you...
I don't know if they're prepared, I assume they're here and prepared to at least provide some answer.
Again, not for debate, but so that we can start to understand how your numbers were generated.
We'd be happy to sit in on, you know, be informed, just what is, what would they be looking for? What can we provide, restana? So we try to make this, we want to say to all, I think, is trying to get an answer to your question. That's a very valid question. So how do we get there the quickest and most comfortable and expedient for everybody?
It's really a banner of what council's level of involvement wants to be, because, I mean, I thought through this a lot, I didn't put a lot of it in writing just because I wasn't sure how much of a negotiation it was going to be. And, you know, so, I mean, I know where I think potentially some of the numbers and percentages would be looking at the numbers, and like I said, I mean, you know, we've already agreed to take on the five million, you guys factor that in, that could be something that changes, you know, there's different things. So I guess, I mean, I'm fine with sitting down in a group, but I don't know what level of, I mean, I think it's really more council decision about how much you guys wanna be involved to have somebody there. I guess we can talk about it in organizational matters, I mean, whether you're comfortable just letting staff and Peters, et cetera, you know, sit down, talk about it, or it needs to be part of a larger session. That's really not, because all I need is, you know, Elaine, Blair, Patrick, Dan and I, and we're gonna on our side to talk about all these things.
Would it be acceptable, at least we had an initial meeting with, as Courtney suggested, at least we could sit down and talk so we could get something that we're understanding what your managers are saying, and they're at least understanding what we're saying, and then we give some type of information to you so you can direct us, you know, more people, less people, somewhere to get, we gotta start somewhere, how about that? We gotta start somewhere, and I think they're very knowledgeable, we can learn from them too, a little bit, where they're coming from, I think it would be a pretty fruitful discussion.
I'm okay with that being great.
I am too, I don't need any discussion, I want some information from professionals, I believe, I hear we have, and ready to take a look at it. When they get done with it, they come back to us and tell us what they think. What they agree to agree or disagree with, or what information they need.
We agree with that too, we all understand that or what, wherever it's coming from.
Yeah. Agreed.
Well, I got press reports coming in with numbers one way, I got better examples coming in from another way. And I can't mesh them together to the math they did, you know?
Right, and I think that we can do that fairly.
Well, if it's ten percent of this, well, then it's possible for the ninety to ninety percent.
Right.
Whereas ninety percent of it already there, or maybe eight percent, I don't know.
And I think we can work that out, whether we agree on a hundred percent or not.
Let's see what we can, let's talk about it, see where we can come to. I think it'd be a pretty fruitful meeting to get that understanding. And people that do it every day, and it gives us a better idea, and then they can report back to you. They work for you.
Time to close, that's the national building.
We're happy with that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anything else from Bill and Dave?
It's funny, Brett asked me if it was, you know, the Higgins, or, you know, the person we've been with on Higgins, somehow I can't tell him what it is. That was his first question when he saw what Larder was.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
When this first started, when we were doing the master plan updates, you talked about doing a joint planning session with township. Are we going to do that, or as it regards to planning for this area?
Yeah, whenever we get to that, we'll talk to them. I mean, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna call Jack and let him know that we're gonna meet with them to, or our staff's gonna meet with their engineers to work through numbers. I mean, they're trying to come up with a number, whether it's feasibility, and we're trying to understand what they're gonna have to be to the rest of the city, so. And I'm gonna, I don't think that stops the master plan process or the rational townships, whatever level, whatever we get there, Michelle.
Okay.
I'll throw some spaghetti up on the flagpole. There is a process in Michigan where different local units of government can create a joint planning commission for a specific area or the entire thing. So we do have the opportunity, I would lobby very strongly that for this area, at least the initial development, if we decide to take that track, we form a joint planning commission with Sciop Township, so they can have people involved in helping direct it so that it makes them whole and it works for them as well.
I just feel we need to get Sciop on board.
So our staff will take the lead on contacting you folks to set up that meeting. Does that sound fair? Okay. Is it okay to move on to item L three?
Yes.
Okay. New business item L three is consideration of the Dexter Community School District Project comment submission. This is related to the proposed new school, National Forest Health.
Yeah.
Reconcile to elementary school.
Yep.
And the site improvements that are around it.
Yes. At your last meeting, you had asked that before we, it was the way I understood it, was before we gave comments on this preliminary plan, that we provide you with the comments that we've got so far. So for reference, this is their phase one bond project. It proposes, they're proposing a new twenty-four classroom elementary school. It would be an extension of Cornerstone, so kind of a mirror. There'd be new playground, tennis courts and basketball courts, access drive, parking, stormwater basin improvements, associated utilities, landscaping, and right-of-way improvements along the employee. The, there is a specific process for school plan review. It doesn't go through the planning commission, doesn't necessarily come to council for approval, but we do get a chance to review it, excuse me, and make comments. And that's based on a guide that the Department of Labor and Regulatory Affairs puts out, and that is in your packet. So it's things like utilities, roadways, stormwater, water sewer, wetlands, et cetera. There are nine different components. Landscaping and the normal parking stuff isn't part of it. So what you've got is, you've got my comments and my review on the plan. And since I'm a planner, I'm gonna review it more along the lines of the planning things. Although I do point out a couple of things as it refers to the right-of-way. Excuse me, there's a small discrepancy between the width of the road right-of-way from the existing to the future or planned right-of-way. There's an encroachment, the parking lot does encroach into that future right-of-way, as well as the existing fence or the proposed fence, if it's in a different location. Hard to tell because it's not identified whether it's the existing or the new. There are ground signs that although they're not in the right-of-way, they don't meet our standards for clearance from the planned right-of-way, and that becomes a concern when you talk about visibility in that clear vision triangle. And then I have identified some comments regarding the type of... And then I have identified some comments regarding the type of plantings that they're proposing, the Cleveland select pears. They have, they're, they have invasive characteristics. I did have a conversation with MSU Extension during Washington County regarding this particular species. Being that we have our wonderful Mill Creek Park, having any kind of invasive plant material, we wanna really make sure that that's not, that that's not going to be planted. And so I provided some alternative species for them to consider. And then the buffer strip, because the parking lot, the proposed parking lot that they're proposing right on Dan Hoy will be fronted on Dan Hoy. I'm providing as a reminder to them what our landscape buffer is for parking that's adjacent to a road. Then you've also got Patrick's comments in here regarding his review of the engineering matters. It's a, it's a, it's a pretty substantial five-page list. So there's, there's a lot of things that the plan needs to provide more information on. Katie Lee called today from Washington County, soil erosion. They were, they submitted the plan, but it wasn't a complete application. There are still pieces of the application that don't have enough information. So while we're all trying to work with the schools to help them move along with this, she's not prepared to, to give a soil erosion permit yet. So we did receive a revised plan today, this afternoon. So they, they provided more detailing of the plan. It doesn't address any of these comments because they haven't gotten them yet. And they know that they're gonna have to revise again, so.
Did the, I'm sorry, did the, um, their water usage and REs already be included in our last little update?
Yeah, they know, they know that it's twenty-four times eight, a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
And how does that fit into our capacity?
We took them into, yeah, we took that capacity into account in the studies because we knew, we have for that and for a future middle school, I think, that might could one day be out on the Parker roadside.
Do we treat all that runoff from their drop-off area? Is that huge?
No, that, that's, well, that was storms, you mean their storm sewer? I know they built that fancy stormwater system.
They built that skateboard park back there.
Right, and they built a stormwater.
There's a detention back there.
It was very elaborate, new, fairly new system.
So we don't see it?
It has an outlet though.
Yeah, no.
It has an outlet, it's just, it's got a, it's got a permeable bottom, so.
Yeah, it gets, doesn't come out of.
Ideally, some sort of, some, some, I don't think there's a treatment device at the end of it.
I just didn't know if we had to treat it through our, like other stormwater.
Well, it comes out for nature.
Yeah.
So it'll, it'll dump into ours eventually anyway. What about the, um, I was trying to read the traffic turning where he gets the, or are we gonna try to redo the intersection at the industrial park with, is that gonna line up somehow?
Patrick, you wanna explain what they're gonna do with the road?
Well, I saw a two-lane and I saw a three-lane and I saw a projection and I saw a mess.
So in addition to the plans that were submitted, they prepared a traffic study, so, uh, earlier this year, they went out and put traffic counters out. It was, it was during the time when the Shield Road Bridge was closed. So there's some, some nuances with the data, but.
It'll eventually reach their capacity.
Yeah, so it's probably maybe potentially overpredicted a little bit in some of the areas in Dan Hoy at least. But we gave them some of that, we gave them some of the information from some of the recent developments that came in. The Rainbow Child care included in analysis of that intersection, so we were able to talk to that as well as the, the model built condition for the roundabouts when those go in. So they were able to build basically a, a day-one model of what it would look like. And so that basically set off a series of improvements that would have to be done on Dan Hoy. And then, I think we, we didn't, the plans are pretty big and they're still, still calling, right, seventy percent at this point with respect to the road itself. But what's gonna happen is basically road widening on the north side. So there's a series of driveways are gonna do widenings for those that give basically deceleration lanes. That'll take cars off the road, make them, allow them to make a turn, a center turn lane, the whole length. And then, so that's gonna add, you know, essentially twelve feet to the road footprints. We have to push everything out. So that would improve the, you know, the industrial park entrance.
I mean, based on their projection alone, they're gonna double the number of drop-offs and pickups per day.
Right.
Just because they're doubling the school size, so.
And they, in early phases of the project, they were talking about looking at, you know, a signal or a roundabout. But with, with what they presented, they're well within their, their design that they presented just to do the except these deceleration lanes and the center turn lanes. It should help with.
Will the center lane go the length or?
Essentially, yes. If you go on the east end from about where we put that crosswalk in by Gapco and then go all the way down, not quite the walkabout, but pretty much that whole stretch, they would widen. It does leave a small segment that won't get improved because we're doing the work on Dan Hoy at the intersection. So we've kinda talked about how much, you know, maybe that's something you throw in, you know, you do a little bit more of that work, just mill overlay it, just to provide fresh pavement end to end. But it's a pretty substantial improvement that the school has proposed. We're still asking them to provide a little more information on what pavement cross-sections are out there so we can confirm the scope that we're talking about. The fix that they proposed is basically a mill and overlay of the road with the widenings for the beautiful depth asphalt. If for some reason we're seeing it's not quite, you know, consistent, maybe that's something where you do more of a pulverization and, and, you know, have the overlay the whole way. So you basically have a brand-new road surface side to side, you'll have the, the reflected crack that will come through.
And that's what I'm afraid of. I mean, we don't even have the roundabout then and we're throwing an extra four hundred carat of Dan here.
Yeah. So, and Dan Hoy Road, you know, because I think it was built in nineteen eighty-eight, that cross-section out there now, around the same age as Baker. It's gotten its, you know, it's prevented maintenance treatments and it's probably at the point where some sort of redevelopment, much like we're doing at Baker Road will be the next step. So, I think that's pretty much everything for Dan Hoy Road itself. Michelle mentioned the right-of-way. You know, it's planned as one under twenty-foot. The south side, we've already given, the industrial park's given the sixty-foot. The north side's still under thirty-three. That was something that I think was a little bit of a surprise to the, the design team with the schools. Because, you know, as Michelle mentioned, part of their parking lot is gonna encroach a little bit, so, we'll adjust some things for sure.
You know, I laughed at this because I remember when the, when the school purchased the land for Wiley School, they had an opportunity to buy all this land at the same time from the same guy, right? Remember Donna, Ted, Ted Glazier? And they said, no, we'll never need this property ever. I laughed about it today thinking about, well, how we got another school going up there, so, but he, so if I'm looking at this parking lot that they got here, you know, and along Dan Hoy, there's no, there's nothing at all that's, there's no.
Buffer at all along there?
There's no landscape buffer.
There's no landscape or buffer at all along there?
They haven't shown it, no. Now, I have not looked at their new plans that they've submitted, the ones that they submitted this afternoon, that has more landscape sheets, so I don't know if they changed anything. I, it would be nice if they had. But currently, as you go from west to east, the parking, the portion of the parking lot down here where the west starts to approach in to the right-of-way and then this over here, that's.
So, excuse me, Michelle, why are you standing up here? This is another drop-off axis that they have here that's on the other side of Stormy Tension here?
Correct.
And they also can drop off here. East, east and a west drop-off site. Here's the west side, there's the east drop-off site and there's another drop-off site with parking on this side as well.
Correct.
They can't do much landscaping there along that, the burn there, the burn there, I mean, you can't. And this is the only thing we're talking about now. We're not talking about any of the other changes that they're doing at, at the old high school. I apologize for asking questions that maybe everybody else is, I'm just trying to catch up with a bunch of stuff.
No, no, we're just looking at this too. Do either of you know, was there any discussion on whether the drive for the Mill Creek entrance, as they call it, off of Dan Hoy should connect through?
Through onto, all the way through on the.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a two-lane to two-lane. It could be a one-way in and a one-way out, so that it's not like a obvious, you'd have to really, it wouldn't be convenient to do, but is there any? If you, if you were a parent, you were dropping off, you know, it wouldn't be unheard of to have a kid in Mill Creek and a kid in Cornerstone necessarily. And if you were making one trip to be able to cut.
Cut through the school property.
To come this way as opposed to having to go back to the light, get out on the road, go around the corner, come around, then come in and.
That was one of my questions.
Pretty steep, right?
Anybody look at that or do we, can we bring that up? I mean, we do have, you know, circulation issues all around during those two hours.
We can ask again. When I first started here and we met, remember the wayfinding that they were talking about? One of my questions was why don't you have traffic moving between, within, internally between the campus?
Well, I mean, they do between, you know, Wiley and Bates.
Yeah, right.
I mean, there's, you know, such that it is, and I mean, that is a, like a cut-through for people. I mean, I'm sure some people use it a little bit, but it's not really, but, what's that?
I've read it.
Oh, yeah, and people respect it for what it is. It's not, it's not abused. I don't, I don't hear any problems or see people racing. I walk that way all the time. There's not people coming in and out of that.
Not a lot.
But it, it seems to me like they would want to explore that.
We can bring it up again.
It's also another alternative for people that don't wanna do that and they can come out exit gap to a, to a traffic signal there at.
At Meadowview?
At Meadowview.
Well, if you're going, it just seems like.
There is a hill there.
So there's no round, there's no round.
There's a paved walk. There's a paved area that's the size of a car that you catch where the old playground area was, because I walk it. And you go up that, bit of an incline. You, there's, looks to me like you'd end up connecting to the, um, middle school area and that, there, it looks to me like you could take a straight shot across there and you could get, make a good connector. I, again, I, I don't know. You'd have to go out there and look at it.
Is this alternative parking, Michelle, is this, is this alternative parking lot not there now?
No, that is there now.
That, this whole parking lot's there right now?
Correct.
Is that where the teachers park most of the time or do they, I don't think they park there.
No, yeah, remember, Patrick, the parking lot, the existing parking lot on the east side, this is here now, but they talked about that being for teacher parking.
Why does it say alternative parking lot? Why does it say alternative parking lot?
Because this is existing.
I don't remember why they called it alternative, but they do talk about teacher using that one.
Right.
Yeah. We use it part there all the time for the kids' soccer and field where the kind of courts are going.
Back in here, the Jones Courts.
But it's an existing parking lot.
It's existing there already, so the word alternative is not, an alternative is not okay.
One other thing too, we noticed during the plan review, I think this is just a, a byproduct of how the things, the plan was developed. I think they started with the site plan, they did the traffic studies, the traffic study resulted in findings. The back rated rider plan does not coordinate with what the actual Dan Hoy improvements are, so you're probably not seeing the full development of what that'll look like. And that's one of the things we talked about is the plan's gotta, gotta match. And, you know, so it'll be much more significant than what you see in terms of the actual work that you see on Dan Hoy in front of the school. And it's, it's the city's benefit. It's a lot of, you know, definitely helped with operations down there, it helped with the industrial park and we talked about that one radius, the trucks coming in, I think they jumped the curb a lot, pushed that back, they'll take care of that, the schools will cover that. It might have to get pulled back a little bit potentially if they could look at that turn. But it's actually, with the road being widened, it may actually help with that speed.
So, Michelle, the plans that are from Midwestern that show the roads that you included, is this, this is the road?
That's correct.
So this is the cracked road plan?
That's, that, that's not the most recent that they just submitted, but, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was in their packet, but that's the cracked old road would look like as of last week online.
Yes.
One last, I guess, comment with respect to traffic. They had mentioned that they like to use this as an opportunity to take one more crack at getting, correct, rectangle flash and beacons at some of the key intersections for crossings.
Right.
So what we, what we propose to them is that, you know, we're working with existing traffic and the existing traffic is going to drive us to certain decisions on, on the basis of warrants. If they can show a, a projection that, you know, there's gonna be more pedestrians crossing here, it could, it could potentially open that up as an opportunity. So I know that the school is very interested in, in kinda going with those enhanced warnings at, at crosswalks that are activated by students. You know, they like what they have on Shield Road. It's, you know, something that people are comfortable with and they are, it's a definitely, it's an enhancement that draws attention to people crossing the streets, so we're open to it. You know, their traffic engineer is gonna look at that and see what they, they have regulations based on.
Right now, they didn't warrant there on Baker.
No, and they, so.
Not enough pedestrians, not enough traffic, too much traffic.
The issue on Baker is that we put the island in, so they only have to cross twelve feet. If we did that project in one or the other, if we left it as, you know, just one crossing, then it would've been, it would've met warrants, but because we did the shorter crossing.
Or we could increase the speed limit substantially.
Yes, take it forty miles an hour.
Have heard.
My speed limit I made at seven in the morning was zero.
There are, there are, there are, Word of Education members or at least one that doesn't understand the warrant thing.
Oh, yeah. I think she's pulling the, if we're talking about the same person.
I didn't say he or she, but.
You don't know who it is. Well, I know who it is.
So Courtney, I think, you told us, but, you know, right, you told us, you told the council, you told me, how often does the existing flashing thing that's there now flash?
I think it was like seven-thirty to nine-thirty and then the end of the day hours.
Three-thirty to five-thirty.
At Baker, you're talking about?
Yeah, so it, it's on automatically? It comes on automatically and flashes?
It's on a timer. It's not like our lights.
But the, the schools tell the children not to use the crossing because people don't stop for the light when it flashes.
But they aren't gonna stop for a rapid flashing beacon either.
For some reason, they think they will.
I remember a student the other day, he says he gets beat up on that at least three times a week. Parents want that.
Or they want a crossing guard there, but.
Or a crossing.
The crossing guard would cost the city, not the school.
In perpetuity.
Right.
What if they just parked a bus in the center lane and put the stop light out and blink and things? By state law, they have to stop, right?
Might just drive on a five.
I'm sorry to interrupt. How, how can they say they don't use it when they ask for money to get the island put in?
Don't know.
They, they have, yeah, that's what they keep saying is that they, they tell kids not to use it.
That's just dumb. You can put that on tape and on the camera. That's just dumb.
They froze school money to put that in and then they tell them not to use that.
I mean, that doesn't make any sense at all. Why did we spend all the money to help, help them do that? I mean, anyway, this is, they're gonna, they're gonna come asking for those two things. They're gonna.
But, yeah, and they've said.
Flashing beacon, you mean?
The rapid flashing beacons. They made it, they made a clear point to say they don't want any money from the city with, in regards to the rapid flashing beacons. They intend to, will pay for, they've also said that they're not looking for anything else from the city as far as costs, so.
Except a reduction in taffees, right?
They did not bring that up at the last meeting.
That does not come up to us.
It's, they made it really, really clear that they can have three years to make the. It's, it's, they made really, really clear that they can have three years to make the payment on it, so.
Yeah, they oughta go work out.
I, I suggest that if they are B twos, they can pay for the installation, but then maintenance is a big deal on these. You know, we, we know that, that there are vehicles that occasionally will clear off the road and take, take the post out in the middle. It's more expensive than your typical sign, so pay for the installation, but then also.
What, are you gonna have two of them on Baker now with the island?
You would actually probably need four of them because you'd need them on either side.
That's what I mean, two sets.
Yep, and those would be independent, so. They're not, I mean, they're probably two thousand dollars a piece, ready with your interflex on them. They're solar now, which helps.
Be very careful with that. There was a kind of a, did these lights and a number of.
So, excuse me, Sean, it says consideration. We even had a motion there or are we just delaying it or whatever?
I think the question, I think the item is on here in case there's other comments that they wanna give back to the schools.
Yes.
Because, because the, the Laura process is driving it. We have a limited window in which to give them schools. I don't, I might have stepped out and missed. Did you get clarification on what the actual submittal date is?
I, they, no, they have not told me what their actual submittal date is, although I've asked multiple times now.
And you're asking who, the school?
No, I asked Kerry Baker, who goes to TMP, who's doing the plan. And the person at TMP has not responded.
Okay, so maybe we should call Laura.
I have a call in to Laura, but I have not connected with the girl up there.
Okay. Well, cause they're gonna play by the timeline. The goal is to get our, all of our comments to them, you know, through the windows.
Well, I, I, I mean, I guess I could make a lot of different comments, but my, the two things that I see is that I really think we oughta have some kind of a buffer along Dan Hoi there in that parking space there, okay? Some kind of a shrubbery or something, I, you know, something there. I don't wanna steal Sean's thunder, but I think they oughta consider some way that they could connect a, a road that would take us through to the exit there at Meadowview.
Yeah.
I think that would help traffic. I think it would help them and it, it kinda fits in the idea of, of, you know, connecting, you know, cause you. I don't know how many cars, but there, you figure out, you know, it's twenty, take it on, twenty percent of the people have kids in both schools, okay? So that would help twenty percent of the people, twenty percent of the traffic coming out on another road and trying to get to.
Trying to make a left out of there.
So, those are my two comments and I don't know how else we're gonna proceed here, but I just.
Have, have these plans been reviewed by the Dexter River Fire Department?
Yes.
Okay. Do they have comments separate from?
No, they're, they worked with, with the schools before the plans were drawn up so that that access road and such, not with their, not with their, not, they're satisfied with that.
And do you wanna motion to add these recommendations to Laura?
Um, I don't think you need to make the, a formal motion. We'll, I'll take Patrick's and I's comments, put them together along with the comments that you have tonight. And we will get those to the, to the schools. And I'll, I, my thought was that I would send them up to Laura so Laura knows up there that, you know, okay, we're working on this with them, but the plan's not ready yet. They, they have the discussion to listen to us or completely.
Yeah, I'm really concerned about this application, about them not letting us know. We only got X amount of time to respond and they haven't told us when they've.
Right.
Well, worst case it was the thirty-first and then they give us.
Right, so they've, they've amended the plan and got it to us, but they've also sent, they have to send that amendment up to Laura too. And Kerry Baker, when I spoke with him last week, had mentioned that they would be sending an addendum up to Laura, so. Being that the plan is dated and the cover letter is dated, today's date, I'm, I'm gonna presume that, that they've got it today.
I mean, it's their responsibility, correct, to let it. I hate to be rushing around because of their inconsistency.
Right, well, we had originally said that we would give them comments by November fifteenth. After talking with council at your last meeting, you guys said you wanted the comments, and so we let them know right away, hey, it's gonna be a little bit longer on the comments. But we will get them to you, but they will also include council comments too. And they were okay with that.
Who's, who's in charge?
We go through Kerry Baker with Beckett, Beckett Raider.
Okay.
And then he distributes the, the email chains with all the CCs are, everybody's getting it. So you've got Granger, you've got.
School board.
The school, uh, no, I don't see anybody on the school board. I don't see their names on there. It's, it's their project team that get all the emails. And I presume somebody from Granger is working directly with, with Chris Timmison aboard.
Can we recommend that they call the new school Mill Creek side so no one knows which.
We haven't talked about the name of it yet. It just might be Cornerstone one point oh and one point two.
Okay, we have a module, Alford?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Alford's consideration of the main street signal timing strategy implementation.
So let's just follow up from the main street signal timing study and some ideas about implementation. Talked about doing it phases and then actually see the impact instead of doing everything and then you don't know if it's working or if something isn't. So the first suggestion is just making the modifications to the signal timing, which is increasing the length of the signal and changing the peak hours slightly. Just changing one hour from two to three AM. Phase two is prohibiting left turns at Central. And then phase three would be modifying the traffic signals in accordance with the report, which is adding a dedicated right. And then making the left where you could go on a yellow flashing arrow, kinda like Z even at Dexter Harbor. So we don't, basically, the most important thing we'd like to do this now would be implement the new timing, see how that goes. We wouldn't really do the no, no left turn until after snow season because, you know, we don't need the guys running into barrels on a temporary no turn, no left turn. And then we would probably budget for the, the signal phrase to take effect in that fiscal year, so I don't really have.
So should we approve phase one and two or just phase one for now?
You can just approve phase one for now, that's fine, just so we can do the, the work on the signals.
Okay, so wait, so motion by Zach, second.
Phase one.
Second by Dan.
Second by Dan for phase one.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ray.
I'm sorry, this isn't about phase one, it's about phase two. If you're talking about prohibiting left turns, will you prohibit crossing the whole road? Going straight from Central into the parking lot, the parking lot into Central?
So really, it probably should be turn right only.
Right, aim at, that's in my personal opinion.
Okay.
We've talked about that for years.
Well, you know, if you put no left turn somewhere, that's gonna go.
Yeah, it could just be right turn only because I don't know what you would put up to say no going straight, so probably would just be similar to saying.
I'm worried about going straight, that space there. I've seen more close accidents there. Kids coming running from that Dairy Queen straight across there uptown or, you know, whatever we're calling that way, that direction. And use, somebody zips across and there's no way.
No, it's, it's waiting to happen.
Because, yeah, right, because you have to get across too many of the traffic here. They just pull it and go.
So remind me when we did all this studying, this is June?
We did it right at the end of the fiscal year. I wanna say it was like the last week in June.
We did the counts when school was still in San Joe.
Oh, that's right. That, I know we were rushing for some deadline. It was school, you're right.
Probably the last week in May, I think. Maybe not Memorial Weekend, yeah.
I know it was last fiscal year.
But then the study was over this summer.
So was the bridge closed yet?
The bridge was not.
Not for the traffic counts of the school. The bridge had been closed until school got out of session and that's why we rushed to do it before school got out.
So locally, the roads were all open. Regionally, twenty-three was under construction. June, June first was the day of the counts, actually. That's what I thought. I thought I read June somewhere. For the timings, is it possible for our staff to adjust the timings or is this a highly technical piece that we need to call Mr. Dapich?
He has to do that.
Okay.
It's the equipment that he has that, you know.
Okay. I, I bring that up because if we ever do get new equipment, my observations are that the majority of the traffic is from the schools. Because folks don't want their kids to ride the bus. So the days when school gets out at eleven, this new timing isn't gonna help, but it doesn't happen all the time. So it would be nice if we don't get the call from the schools when we have their calendar and we go out there, we hit the button or the app on the phone and it's happening for schools.
What do you think about for homecoming?
They've got floats.
Main change in the timing is, I think we're really talking about basically folks coming in that PMP timeframe. That's when it's obviously the worst, when we see the backups that go well past Hudson Street. So i- in that case, we're, that's where we're gonna extend those single, single lengths, the, the cycle lengths to a hundred twenty seconds. And work what we call an offset into that. So basically, we get the cars moving at Broad Street. And then however long much time it takes for those cars from Maine and Baker to get to Broad to do that offset. Basically, it's that whole queue moving. And that, that's really, that timing change is, is in the PM timeframe. So, and we didn't, didn't see the, the issues that we see midday like we do at the, you know, at the PM time. So this is really driving towards that issue, resolving that. As Courtney mentioned, you know, this is a first step. You know, when we presented the, the original study back in August, you know, we, we found that obviously the conditions report in the morning and afternoon. And outside of doing, you know, significant road widenings and just turn lanes and things like that, there really wasn't a silver bullet that said, we can, we can take this from a level service F to a C or anything like that. But what we thought is we can do some of these smaller projects, call them little interventions, to try to, you know, get rid of those all delays that can start to add up. Try to, you know, try to help things out, you know, it, it's, and that's where I think Courtney's approach is, let's work with the existing equipment, see how that does. And then we can start to, you know, fight off smaller projects and analyze them and if they, they work great, if they don't, we can get rid of them. You know, and I think our, our thought would be, you're looking at obviously the impacts to drivers, but you're also listening to downtown businesses. You know, if they have issued, you know, this works or this doesn't, take that on consideration.
So this is aimed at the BM.
Right.
So is it, is it two to three or three, two to seven or three to seven?
It's gonna be three to seven. The former, the current peak hours are two to seven, so we're modifying it to three to seven. Which I think makes sense because it doesn't really get that bad and it is a long time to wait at the pedestrian, so we can keep it closer to, you know.
If you hit the magic pedestrian button during the peak time, does it change quicker for you?
It doesn't. It, it'll basically just make sure on the next call that, that the signal's provided. But, you know, if you're standing there at, you know, the one hundred nineteen seconds left mark and push the button, it's a hundred nineteen seconds.
So Patrick, remind me how this, how our study.